Evan, did you figure out what was up with that podium microphone?
Check two.
No, I couldn't. I thought that it was turning off by itself for some reason.
This isn't the same one. Check two.
My husband was watching the meeting at home and he said that he couldn't hear any of the things the kids were saying. And I said that was the best part of the meeting.
Yeah, sometimes some of the kids got really on. I even came up once and my kid. But one of those microphones was turning off by itself.
I feel like it would be nice if we just used one without a button over there maybe. And then people wouldn't be playing around with it. Like if you gave me and Paul one with a button, we know if it's not working.
Well, Luke or Alan set these things up.
Yeah.
They picked this. This isn't the same one that turned off last week.
Okay, good.
So that one's out of circulation. These are all the same kind of microphones, except for that right there. But what you're saying is actually, would make a lot of sense.
I mean, I remember one time somebody else had one of those with a button.
Yeah, actually Ms. Dad had one here last week and it didn't go bad. Which is why he thought, oh, that one needs to be taken out of circulation.
Interesting.
But I'm gonna be watching that and I'll be ready to run up there for some reason.
Okay, thank you.
Check two.
It's been good today, buddy?
Yeah, buddy, yeah, good.
Got a lot going on this week?
Yeah.
Government's committee.
It is.
Resource advisory on Thursday.
Ooh, it is very cold.
chilly.
It's quite chilly, yeah.
And they're not getting a day.
I was busy. Yeah, I was busy with work. I had to work this weekend. But they paid me for it. I missed you last. You missed last month. How about you?
We were good.
Where'd you go in Maine?
Just outside of Portland.
We did do all these.
It's a lovely place. It was a great relief.
I remember thinking this was like the art.
I love Maine.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Prior to tonight's public meeting, the board met in executive session to discuss matters related to school safety that if conducted in public would be reasonably likely to impair the effectiveness of the safety or security measure or jeopardize the security of an individual or a school, including a building, public utility, resource, infrastructure facility, or information storage system. Information or strategy in connection with litigation matters or issues about which identifiable complaints may be made and information related to employment or contractual matters that if discussed in public would lead to the disclosure of information protected by law. Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper. Ms. Dad.
Here.
Ms. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch.
Here.
Ms. Sitch.
Here.
Eight members present, Mrs. Cooper absent.
Thank you. Dr. Reljack, could you introduce our guests tonight?
Sure, we do have a few guests this evening. So I would like to actually introduce Fox Chapel area high school art teacher Joan Marangoni, who's here to introduce some students who won awards in art competitions. So I will turn it over to her and she can introduce some of our students, talk about their success.
Hi, dear board. Thank you so much for inviting us to come and for me to share some information about our visual arts students at the high school. We have two students, Lily McLaughlin and Ayla Aganen, who actually won one of the top 10 spots for junk couture through the United States. So they are now invited to go on to Dublin, Ireland with their competition of their fashion design that they created out of recycled materials. They're gonna be traveling there in the beginning of March. So that's our first big, exciting news. Secondly, I was very excited to have the opportunity to participate with students in the Pennsylvania PennDOT Paint the Plow design that was supported by Dr. Young at the high school. We were extremely excited. Carolyn Grimsley was one of our students who came up with an amazing design. That design was then painted onto a plow that will service in the area during the winter months. And we had a panel of students who assisted her in painting that to complete that. So we're lucky to have Carolyn Grimsley come tonight with her family, as well as Mira Owens, who also participated in making that happen. So thank you so much for having us. Carolyn Grimsley. And Mira Owens. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much and congratulations to everyone. And it's exciting, not only that our plow was chosen, but also that it will be used and is being used on Route 28 by two alum from our district. So that's even a little better twist to it, that it's a local team that won, as well as it'll be used by local individuals who also are alum from our district, so.
Would love to see a picture of the design if anybody wants to email that to the board.
Sure. It was in one of our weekly updates. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, I saw a picture somewhere of it.
It was cool.
It was great, yeah.
The other group that, another person wasn't able to be here this evening, but I still would like to recognize high school sophomore Lilith Bowen, who won an award in a drama competition. She's unable to be with us this evening, but I will make sure that she gets her certificate from the school board. And she did a wonderful job in Prime Stage Theater's Fifth Annual High School Drama Awards. And she won the Best Student Costume Design and/or Fabrication category for the high school's 2024 Fall Play Harvey. So we had a lot of arts, not only in visual arts and also in fabric arts and costume. And so we're really pleased with all of our students. Excellent questions? That is all, those are all of our guests this evening. Our guests are always welcome to stay for our meeting, but if you choose not to, we also understand that as well, so.
And do you have a superintendent's report tonight?
There is no report this evening.
Okay. And Mr. DeFray, is there a solicitor's report?
No report.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next week, we will need a motion to approve the minutes for the agenda study session and regular business meeting dated January 13th, 2025. Does anyone have any questions, comments, corrections about the minutes? Okay. Moving on, we have our first public comment period. No one signed up, okay. All right, moving on to new business, facilities and transportation. Mrs. Lynch.
So next week, I'll be moving on the following items. Acceptance of the bid and award of electrical construction contract for the high school panel feeder replacement project. Accept the bid and approve to award a contract as attached to the bidder listed below on the high school feeder replacement project, conditioned upon the contractor completing their post-bid award documents. Number two, authorization to advertise for bids Fox Chapel area high school's domestic water line and service replacement project. Authorize the advertisement of bids for the Fox Chapel area high school domestic water line and service replacement project. Number three, authorization to advertise for bids Fairview Elementary School Window Replacement Project. Number four, approve the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and Canzian Johnston and Associates LLC for architectural services related to the Fairview Elementary School Window Replacement Project at a cost of $42,000. This is a new agreement. And number five, ABC Transit Incorporated. Approve the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and ABC Transit Incorporated for transportation services for the period July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2030. This is a renewal of services. I will move on to those items.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on those items? Number eight, our ABC Transit, our new, this will be our new bus contract. And so our prior contract was seven years old. So we have a new five-year contract. And could you tell us a little bit about that, Dr. Reljack?
Sure, it's a five-year contract with ABC Transit. And it will provide buses of various sizes to meet the needs of transporting students who attend schools within the Fox Chapel area school district, as well as students who are, we are responsible to transport outside of the district to other facilities. And in the agreement, it seems to be, we are pleased it's a fair agreement that helps to make sure that that transportation can continue. It's predictable for us for budgetary purposes. And it will hopefully be a great continuation of a partnership.
And can you tell us how many companies?
Sure.
What's the word I'm looking for?
Bid.
Bid, yes.
Well, we reached out to multiple companies to provide proposals to us. There were two that completed proposals for us. A few chose, after they got some information from the district, chose not to add information in. And so we looked at two companies and this was the recommended company.
Okay. Any other questions? None? Okay. Mr. Hamilton, could you please read the finance report?
Yes, we'll have 11 items in the finance section next week. Item one is the fund disbursements for January for $9.00 million, $9.1 million. Item two is the disbursements from Fund 31 for capital reserves for $70,893. The item three is the finance report for 2024, which will be acknowledged and filed as attached. Item four is the budget transfers for 2024, 2025. Item five is the student activity financial reports. Item six is permission to advertise athletic supplies for '25, '26. This will be the athletic supplies for fall and winter and athletic supplies for spring. Item seven will be the exoneration of the tax collectors for the, for Indiana Township, O'Hara Township, Asmaul Borough, Blonox Borough, Fox Chapel Borough, Shupford Borough, and further tax collections on the 2024 real estate taxes. And item eight is the Resolution 2025-2 fixing compensation for certain school district real estate tax collectors. We'll approve the resolution to fixing the compensation for the tax collectors, real estate tax collectors, beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2028. Item nine will be Resolution 2025-3 Real Estate Tax Collector Bonds, which will, it's fixing, it's fixing the amounts of the bonds required for elected or appointed tax collectors in each of the municipalities for the period January 1st, 2025. And to settle, and settlement of their respective 2028 duplicates with regard to the collection of real estate taxes. Resolution 2025, number 10, Resolution 2025-4 Fees and Charges Collection of Taxes, Tax Claims and Leans, approved 2025-4 as attached, stopping fees and charges in connection with the collection of taxes, tax claims and tax liens. And the last item is the Asset Control Solutions Incorporated Agreement for $12,700, which is a renewal of services.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these 11 items?
Is item nine a typo, 2028 duplicates?
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Say that again?
In number nine, the 2028.
It says 2028 duplicates with regards to lessons.
Yeah, I think that's always.
Is it a four, three year?
So the tax collectors are elected for a four-year term.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I see.
And this would apply to that entire term.
Okay.
It's the same as under number eight. That's why that calls.
And that is the term.
I have an esoteric specific tax question. Is PA del tax selected by us or is it given to us as our collector? It is selected by us. What are the terms of the contract? Like how long is PA del tax our delinquency collector? Does anybody recall?
We reviewed that four years ago or five years ago.
So that's kind of why I was wondering, because I realize I'm actually not fresh on.
Actually, I think we reapproved them last year.
Yeah.
Did we approve them last year? Yeah, but we did it very detailed. First time.
First time was very thorough.
The first time was very thorough, which was very helpful.
All right. And is that similarly a four-year or five-year contract typically?
Mrs. Anusik said that the current contract is through 2027.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much. Sorry about that. I just wasn't really ready for that.
Any other questions? Okay, instruction. Ms. Finley, would you mind reading that for us since Mrs. Cooper is not here?
Certainly. Mrs. Cooper will be moving on two items next week. The first one, January 2025 graduates. The following student was eligible for mid-year graduation upon receiving final approval by the high school lead principal, Sydney Huduck. And number two, the 2025, 2026 school calendar, school district calendar will be moved to approve.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on those two items? Just a reminder to the community, the calendar is there for you to view. The proposed calendar, we'll be voting on that next week. Okay, Mr. Frank, legislation and policy.
Excuse me. Next week, we will move for the first reading of the following revised policies. 005 Organization, 113.2 Behavioral Support, 308 Employment Contract Board Resolution, 620 Fund Balance, 705 Facilities and Workplace Safety, 706 Property Records, 708 Lending of Equipment and Books, 709 Building Security, 710 Use of Facilities by Staff, 716 Integrated Pest Management, 717 Cellular Telephones, and number 823 Opioid Antagonist. And we will also move to retire the following policies. 713 Protection of Policies. This policy is from 2010 and it's outdated. And the language regarding the protection of district policy is already addressed in other policies related to care of school property, emergency preparedness, et cetera. And we would also move to retire 715, which is the use of fax machines. This policy on fax machines is no longer necessary.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, extend a word of gratitude to Dan Breckgrice, who came to our Projects and Planning Committee meeting and disclosed our, like, sort of above, far above minimum requirements for integrated pest management. So we do an outstanding, Dan and his team does an outstanding job documenting the products that are used, if any, and their proximity and the reasons and places where they're applied and when. And I would encourage anyone in the community who has an interest in it to reach out, but it's met with my satisfaction and that of our committee. So I just wanted to kind of nod to that as we pass this IPM policy or recommend it for first reading.
It was very thorough. It was great. Yep.
Thank you.
And then the cellular telephones policy, I know that this was, this is the one that's specific to district employee use. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Sitch, personnel.
Great. Next week, I will move on the following items. I will read all of them. So item one, resignations a professional, the resignation of Stephanie A. Abriadis, educational support teacher at Kerr Elementary School under the retirement plan as outlined in the 2328 FCEA contract. The resignation of Dave F. Batista, physical education teacher at Fox Chapel area high school under the retirement plan. The resignation of Lisa M. Bellinotti, elementary teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. Resignation of Marla B. Brashear, elementary teacher at Fairview Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Regina Cornet, elementary teacher at Kerr Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Heather Flynn, educational support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Catherine A. Frederick, elementary teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Todd E. Masick, physical education teacher at Fox Chapel area high school under the retirement plan. The resignation of Jody L. Travaglia, physical education teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Therese K. Wilk, reading support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. And the resignation of Amy J. Zatola, elementary teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. For B, supplemental contracts athletic, the resignation of Matt Sasson, football high school fourth assistant due to personal reasons. Item number two, appointments, A, educational support. Courtney L. Kush is approved as a 12-month receptionist, district office secretary for the Fox Chapel area school district. For supplemental contracts athletic, the following athletic supplemental contracts. For Brendan Urso, intramural's middle school activity sponsor, 11, bigger, faster, stronger as leave replacement. For Reed Ursic, baseball middle school head coach, and Nicholas Luciano, baseball high school second assistant coach. For C, supplemental contracts, non-athletic, Catherine Gelner, bless you, mentor teacher Dorseyville Middle School. Emily G. Grakowski, class sponsor, seventh grade, leave replacement. Therese Wilk, mentor teacher, Hartwood Elementary School. All of the effective dates and compensation schedules are indicated here. For leave professional, Heather Flynn, educational support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School. For medical sabbatical, leave replacements professional Alexandra, Alexandria, excuse me. Luke Kurt Howell is ratified as leave replacement educational support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School, available due to the medical sabbatical of Heather Flynn. Brigitte S. Patrick, or Bridgette, I'm not sure which, is ratified as a second semester leave replacement computer science teacher at Dorseyville Middle School, available due to the medical sabbatical of Sezen Gekuyori. Kayla Wise is ratified as leave replacement elementary teacher at O'Hara Elementary School, available due to their child reunion leave of Samantha Diamond. For homebound instruction teacher, Marla Brashear is ratified as a homebound instruction teacher for 2425 school year. Under volunteer, item six, athletic. Under volunteer, item six, athletic, the following athletic volunteer is approved, Donald Schubert, for baseball high school. So I'll move on these six items next week.
Okay, any questions or comments about the personnel? Okay, thank you, Mr. Good, operations and cooperative services.
Yep, next week, I have two items. Um, first, to approve the agreement as attached, uh, between the district and precision, precision copy products, um, for equipment leasing and print management, uh, from July 1st, 2025 through June, June 30, 2030, at an annual cost of $329,400. This is a new agreement replacing the existing one. Number two, uh, number two, which is related, uh, is to approve the agreement between the district and Innovative Service Technology Management Services, um, for the same period, um, at an annual cost of $191,172. This is a new agreement, but a continuation, um, because the, uh, previous contract we had includes this one with this company. So, yep, have those two, and those are both related to the copying, which, um, I think we had a, a lot of discussion in the, in committee, uh, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Um, I, just my gratitude to Kim Polachak for her outstanding transparency and detail in reporting the entirety of that process, lending on schedule and within the proposed range of, um, money, which we were looking for, but also finding a great vendor that seemed to do well, so outstanding due diligence, um, and thanks for sharing so effectively.
And Dr. Reljack, can you just explain a little bit this separation of these two, and how it compares with the current, having them both kind of together?
Sure, in the current agreement, the same, uh, company that is providing the copiers is also providing the services for the copy center, however, based on our analysis, uh, the district is recommending a different group for the copiers, however, the IST, um, or Innovative Service Technology Management Services, is willing to continue to have, it's, it's a different kind of breakout, so they work with different companies, and so that's really what it is, it's, it's a continuation of a relationship that we have that is working, and, um, allows us to also take advantage of a new, uh, vendor for our copier and printer services.
And do it cost-effectively?
And do it cost-effectively, yes. Well, that's always the goal.
Yes. Any other questions or comments?
I, just a little clarification, so the first, the first one is more around the equipment, and the second is, is that...
It's a service.
So is it like staff?
Correct.
Okay.
So we have a copy center, uh, in the district that our educators and staff can send, uh, larger print jobs to, and it, uh, the machines are able to take those print jobs, so it diminishes wear and tear on local machines, and allows us to be a little more efficient in where we place machines and what kinds of machines, so it's, it also helps with that cost-effectiveness.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, it is time for our second public comment period, I assume we do not have... No?
We do, we have ten.
Oh, we do, okay, awesome. Uh, you will have three minutes to speak, just identify your name, and I'll let you know when you have one minute left.
I don't think I'll need all that time.
Okay. You may begin.
Um, my name is Nettie Owens, and I live in the district. I was just curious, and I don't necessarily expect an answer, but perhaps just posing a question that can be thought about, um, with the increased immigration enforcement and the removal of schools and other previously protected areas, what are we doing as a school district? I understand that it's likely to be a rare occurrence, but is there a policy, if I were to show up at any of the school campuses, what is going to be done to handle that situation? And in addition, just the increased pressure and stress on our families in our district, what is being done to support the students who might be impacted by this increased immigration enforcement?
Thank you. Okay, Fox Chapel Educators Association, do you have a comment tonight? Okay, thank you. Board comments, I'm, I'm gonna start, actually, um, I had something I wanted to say about kind of the, the country's events, and might reassure you a bit, um, but as we all know, there's a lot happening in our country right now, uh, but know that our schools will always be a welcoming and safe place for our students. Educators understand that students learn better and feel better when they have a sense of belonging. I need to take these off to see better. Um, uh, they learn better and feel better when they have a sense of belonging in their school, in their classrooms, and we as a district will continue to foster that sense of belonging, no matter what. Um, and I'd also like to point out, I think it was in one of the superintendent updates, but our high school library won, um, the 2025 Outstanding Pennsylvania School Library, which is only given out to one, uh, school a year, so I wanted to congratulate Dr. Ward and, um, the high school on that achievement. And, uh, Mr. Good, we'll go to your end this week.
No comment tonight, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Zich.
Sure. Uh, just in light of the extraordinary news cycle that we've just suffered through, I do think it is important to double down on what you've stated. Um, I'm very grateful to live in a state like Pennsylvania, and to go in a 10th school in a district like this one, that sort of, unilaterally through policy and culture and constitutional rights affirm the right of every child in the state of Pennsylvania to be educated. That is our mission, and all of the rest of this is a distraction from this, from this critical mission, it's why we're all here, I'm lucky to serve on a board that prioritizes that mission above everything, um, and I, if, I wouldn't be sitting here as confident and as grateful as I am if I didn't believe to my core, um, that this district serves students, um, with that mindset, so, um, thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
No comment.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to echo my colleagues and, and say that I was, although disheartened, but also encouraged at all of the feedback from the community that, that we've received, um, concerned about kids and families who are feeling fearful and worried about what's to come, and I think that means that your community cares about you, so to those students and families who are feeling uneasy and worried and afraid, know that I care about you and you belong here, and that's why I'm sitting in this chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynch?
Yeah, and why we, why I've been on the board for five years, have worked to make sure that we're student-centered and talking about safety, and making sure that those things are what are being, um, practiced inside of our buildings as well, so, um, I think we can give reassurance that those things are our priority as well.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
No comment at this time.
Okay, Mr. Frank?
I have a couple of comments, um, it was good to see the art department here, if you're unaware, they, they were the first internationally recognized art department in the United States several years ago, and it's great to see that tradition of excellence continues. This is the last several weeks of the winter sports season, and so we wish those athletes great success, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the librarian, who heads, uh, number one library, library in the state, high school library in the state, is also one of the girls' coaches, and if you look at the front page of the agen, of the agenda, two of the outstanding girl wrestlers, uh, Lily McLaughlin and Mira, uh, are, are listed for their art, uh, accomplishments, but also they're, they're starters on the wrestling team for the girls. Thank you.
Thank you, one more reminder, next week's meeting will be at Hartwood Elementary School for our voting meeting. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.